Planning Commission meeting. We'll call it to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, Chairman.
A roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacob?
Here.
Commissioner Helmar?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Here.
Public comments. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments? Shannon, did you receive anything?
I have received none.
Okay. We'll move right along to the information and consent calendar. There's two items. Approval of the minutes from the April 27, 2021 meeting and approval of the minutes from the May 25, 2021 meeting. If there's no need for discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
All motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Pruitt made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero voice vote. Public hearings. There's one public hearing. Conditional use permit application CUP 21-05 Granite Construction Mining Expansion. Shaun.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Staff tonight is recommending the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 021P-007 with conditions for the expansion of the Granite Construction Company's existing aggregate mining operation on the 202.54 acre parcel in the city of Kalinga. So just to give a little background of this project, it's kind of a unique project because the operation, I mean Granite currently operates in the county. But there, as we know, through general plan development and past approvals, the city has recognized the future expansion of the Granite facility within the old airport property as well. And so I'm going to go through the background and kind of explain where this project started in terms of the expansion portion and kind of where we are tonight in terms of the specific actions that the commission's taking tonight. So Granite owns and operates an existing permitted aggregate mining and processing operation in Western Fresno County known as the Kalinga Facility. The Kalinga Facility consists of multiple permitted mining areas under California Mine Permit 91-10-0005 and 91-10-0007, which are governed by Fresno County Conditional Use Permit and Reclamation Plan Number 2320 and 3512. In addition to the mining and reclamation, existing permitted uses at the Kalinga Facility include aggregate asphalt and concrete processing plants, as well as ancillary uses such as aggregate stockpiling, loading, sales, construction materials, recycling, and equipment storage and maintenance. Under CUP 3512, Granite modified aggregate stockpiling, oh, sorry, County CUP 915 to include a new extraction area that lies west of Los Gatos Creek. There has been no prior mining work done within the portion of the property in the city of Kalinga, and this is the first time a CUP is being processed for the aggregate mining in the city. On August 13, 2020, the Fresno County Planning Commission adopted initial study mitigated negative declaration that studied the entirety of the Granite mining operation located both in the city and the county jurisdictional boundaries. And the approved Fresno County permit, or they approved the CUP 3512 to allow the expansion of Granite's aggregate mining operations to the 299.11 acre parcel in unincorporated Fresno County. The SEQA, the city as SEQA responsible agency must consider the mitigated negative declaration prior to reaching a discretion or decision on the project. So on April 19, 2021, the City of Kalinga Community Development Department accepted and processed a CUP application to allow the expansion of Granite's existing aggregate mining operation on the roughly 202 acre parcel in the city of Kalinga. The project requires a CUP for mining and site plan review for the city of Kalinga to allow future mining operations in the portion of APN 07006089S that lies within the city jurisdictional limits, which is the old airport property. In terms of the Conditional Use Permit application, in accordance with Section 9-2502 of the Kalinga Plan and Zoning Code, related to the resource extraction activities, mining and quarrying, the applicant shall process the CUP as required by the city's land use regulations for mining projects in the manufacturing and business light zoning district. In addition, a mining and quarrying Conditional Use Permit is allowed only in areas designed as resource extraction overlay in the general plan. A small portion of the northwest corner of the site is in the service commercial zone and is not covered in the CUP mining application and is reserved for future commercial uses. So that's basically that those parcels that are adjacent to the highway are not included in this overall project scope. And so in terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, the applicant, application constitutes a project in accordance with SEQA. And accordingly, Fresno County staff prepared initial study in conformance with SEQA for those portions of the project in the unincorporated areas, as well as the portions in the city of Kalinga. Based on the initial study, county staff determined that a mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate SEQA document. The Fresno County Planning Commission adopted the ISMND on August 13, 2020. For those portions of the project in the unincorporated Fresno County, as a responsible agency under SEQA, the City of Kalinga Planning Commission will need to consider the ISMND for those portions of the project within the city of Kalinga's jurisdiction, which is included in the resolution. In terms of department comments, once the application was circulated, deemed complete, staff circulated comments to the necessary departments and received in feedback from necessary departments, and those have been incorporated into the overall project. So the proposed project is to request a new CUP for the city of Kalinga for the, for an aggregate mining and related activities on the 202 parcel, 202 acre parcel that lies in the city limits. Mining operations will be performed in a manner consistent with the current practices at the existing Kalinga Facility in the unincorporated county boundaries and would be initiated by the removal of vegetation, topsoil, growth media, and overburdened materials, which lie above marketable sand and gravel deposits. The overlying materials will be removed using scrapers aided by a motor grader and bulldozer as needed. After overlaying, overlaying materials are removed, marketable sand and gravel will be excavated using a combination of scrapers, front-end loaders, hydraulic excavators, bulldozers, and other support equipment. New excavation areas will need to be closer than 50 feet from the edge of Los Gatos Creek floodplain. The maximum anticipated death of excavation, excavation for mining purposes is 200 feet below ground surface to elevation 484 feet above mean sea level. The project does not involve in in-stream mining and includes setbacks from the 100-year floodplain to the mining boundary. No mining is proposed within 50 feet of a property boundary or below the water table. The groundwater elevation at the site is approximately 300 feet. Following excavation, the sand and gravel will be transported via conveyor and/or internal haul roads to the existing processing plants where it will be processed and sold for its use in construction materials. Mining methods will be consistent with current operations at the existing Kalinga Facility, and no changes to baseline mining production levels are proposed. In terms of the, the overall project, in terms of the phasing, this project is expected to be, you know, over a 55-year period, over six phases, between four to basically 13 years, you know, over, between phases. And then, and we kind of spell out what's anticipated as part of the overall operation in terms of acres per phase. These are estimates. These aren't set in stone the way that we've set the resolution by some amendments that we'll identify to you in the, in the resolution, that they don't have to hit these particular milestones. But the use permit will be in effect for 55 years. So it allows them the ability to kind of process as the market has, and how the market sets them, I mean, things change, it's up and down. But it is good for 55 years, and then it allows for any extensions, but I'll be, I'll be gone by then too, probably, hopefully. Where those extensions will be, will need to be requested if they look to see, if they still need to basically extract more than the 368 acres they have proposed here. And also, there's some additional information in the report, and I won't get too much into detail, and I tried to provide the pertinent information in the staff report for you guys, as well as the attachments. Forgive me, it's, you can blame it on them for the 395-page application, and it doesn't include everything, but there are a lot of documents that I didn't feel that were necessary in terms of the, the reclamation plans. There are some attachments from the, the actual reclamation plan was attached, but all the different exhibits and all the appendices. Since it is kind of overseen by the state and the county in terms of the reclamation plan, I found it necessary to really focus on their operations. So you get an idea of what's moving forward, because as of right now, and the way that this project's set up is that operations aren't going to change. Traffic's not going to change. It's just a matter of the sheer land that's going to be consumed and reclaimed is going to expand. And this has been anticipated in our general plan. It's anticipated in our zoning regulations. And so this project, based on review, does meet all the criteria for this type of operation, including noise attenuation, dust. A lot of these things that are required have been now, you know, analyzed, as you could see from a lot of the studies that were done, from bio to noise to dust control, that really have the potential for impact, but those have been alleviated through the mitigation measures or just through, you know, these studies that have been conducted showing that there's not those types of impacts. So in terms of looking at findings of approval, this is for both a site plan and a conditional use permit. In terms of access, we'll get kind of into some of the details of the project. I think all of you are probably familiar with Granite's existing operations. Accesses, you know, the primary access to the project are at the access roads to the existing facility, which are off State Route 19833, with the exception of miscellaneous service and delivery vehicles, an occasional point of sale, pickup and fill, pit run, or screen material. The applicant does not anticipate customers, visitors, customers and visitors within the project area. Occasionally, employees and equipment may access the Phase Four and Phase Five mining areas west of Los Gatos Creek, utilizing encroachments off of Monterey Avenue, which is going to be in the county in those locations. In terms of, and just kind of highlight, there, there was a traffic impact study by VPRA conducted in 2009. Turning movement counts were taken in September of 2017. This project has been under review for quite some time. I've been working with Candace for quite a while on this project. Remember meeting with her at the county over almost three years ago. And there were the biggest questions they, and the hurdles they had to deal with with traffic. They had to convince Caltrans that they weren't going to increase traffic. And through putting together a traffic impact report shows that based on their operations, they're not expanding operations. They're just, like I had mentioned earlier, they're expanding the footprint of their overall operation and more in their sustainability moving forward in terms of their project and allowing them to stay here in this area for a longer period of time. And so the, the traffic impact study kind of identified the key impacted areas in terms of street impacts from basically the truck traffic. That's the primary truck or the primary impacts. So there is some, there's some identified, identified improvements that were placed in the report that have been carried over into the conditions of approval related to some issue, just basically Phelps Avenue, which is the only impacted road really in the city of Kalinga. Everything else is in the county, more on the peripherals in terms of access to the interstate, where a lot of these aggregate trucks are traveling to and from. Just quick on utilities, all the utility systems are within the Fresno County jurisdiction. However, there is a sewage system connection and a potable water service connection for the little office at the entrance of the facility. There, but everything else is onsite in the county from a well and with also reclaimed water that they use for primarily for their operation. Terms of parking, there's no additional impacts to parking. They have one stall, basically the parking requirement is one stall for every two employees on a maximum shift. But no change to the existing onsite parking for employees is proposed. Consistent with existing practices, the majority of parking will occur in the, at the shop area, which currently has 50 parking spaces for heavy equipment and 10 to 20 employees. Again, this project is primarily operational in the county. The, the sheer project area in the city limits is going to be primarily extraction. There's no like actual operation other than the extraction activities that will be occurring in the city limits. In terms of perimeter fencing and berms, perimeter fencing of at least four foot in height consisting, consisting of no less than three strands of barbed wire will be installed. In each phase, overburdened material will be used to build earthen screen berms, which will also serve as noise control berms around the majority of the project boundary. Upon installation of the berms, below grade excavation will not be visible from surrounding areas. Visual screening of the site, screening of the site will be achieved through the use of noise control visual screening berms. The proposed project, the installation of the noise control berms described above will ensure that the proposed mining operation is in compliance with the standards of the Kalinga, City of Kalinga Noise Element, and that was confirmed through the noise study that was conducted and comparing those and analyzing them to the city's standards. In terms of lighting, consistent with existing practices, portable light towers and permanent light fixtures will be utilized to provide for a safe operating environment. Lighting will be shielded and arranged controlled so as not to illuminate public rights away or adjacent properties. The nearest residences are located greater than 1,000 feet from the project site and are separated by Route 19833 and also Cambridge Avenue, and should not be affected by project lighting. However, to ensure that residents are not affected by lighting and mitigation measure and conditions of approval have been included requiring that all outdoor lighting be hooded and directed as not to shine toward adjacent properties and public streets. And then in terms of off-site improvements, there were some required mitigation measures for off-site transportation improvements. There were fair share payments to Caltrans for I-5 northbound. A lot of these were outside the city limits. The only one that really applies to the city are upgrades to the impacted segments of Phelps, Phelps Avenue between Highway 33 and Calaveras, which is out there near this, out there near the cemetery. A lot of the other connections were State Route 33 and Fifth Street, State Route 33 and Third, Juniper Ridge Boulevard and 33, State Route 33 and Jane Avenue, and then the I-5 northbound off-ramp at Jane Avenue. And what Caltrans does, they, they do fair share payments. So they estimate what the cost of the payments would be, especially for like Fifth Street and Third Street on Elm is a full signalization. So they estimate how much the full signalization is based on their anticipated trips and their impact. They pay a fair share mitigation fee based on those particular intersections. They do the same thing for any development that's in the city, you know, locally, based on the impacted traffic. So in terms of hours of operation, mine activities within the expansion area authorized by this permit shall be limited to the hours of 6:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays, except during periods of public emergency or public works projects, in which case weekends and nights may be permitted. Maintenance of mobile and plant equipment may extend beyond 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekday limits. The estimated employees is 10 to 20. I think that's probably current operational numbers, since there's not, there's not no anticipated major expansion. We talked about, in terms of water use, consistent with current practices, water usage associated with the mining or reclamation activities in the project area will be limited to that needed for dust control. And will be supplied by onsite wells and/or by recycled water for onsite settling ponds, from the onsite settling ponds. Estimated daily water usage is 100,000 gallons per day. However, the majority of this water is coming from the wells and the reclaimed ponds. Like I said, all their, all the city services in terms of water and sewer is a small office with maybe one restroom, I think, in it and a sink. So there's not a lot of water being used from the city. They just have basically a rural water connection with the city. So they don't have a full service connection for operations. In terms of, I, I provided some additional information regarding dust and how they are in compliance and continuing to be in compliance with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District related to dust. I mean, that's some, that's probably a live and die by dust control, considering their extracting material, especially in areas of, you know, different types of airborne, you know, particles. In terms of solid waste, they contract with Mid Valley for solid waste needs. Primarily, that's going to be within their operational area. In terms of distance from sensitive receptors, the nearest residences are located greater than 1,000 feet from the project and are separated by Route 33 and Cambridge Avenue, as we mentioned before. And then there also are some other requirements that are in place as certain phases of the project enter certain areas into the more urban area, that, that's when noise attenuation, the berms and additional measures are, are to be put in place. And those are identified in the resolution, as well as the conditions of approval. And in terms of public notification, on May 27, public hearing notices were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the site as required by local and state law. In addition, there were probably further reaches in terms of the environmental review when the county issued the notices that there were probably, it was probably a larger net that was captured in terms of notification regarding the project. But at this time, they, you know, within the initial study mitigated negative declaration, there were about six factors that were looked at in terms of aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, noise, transportation, and then other environmental issues such as air quality, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, and hydrology and water, water quality that were considered less than significant. So at this time, I know it's a lengthy report and it's very detailed, but a lot of this effort had gone through a pretty extensive review as part of the county's operations in terms of their oversight regarding the reclamation plan and their operation permit, where the city is just kind of approving an additional area for them to continue their extraction activities. So with that, Candace and her crew are here. If you have any questions of them, I think they've brought a couple people on, and she's got a brief little five-minute presentation just to kind of provide you some additional information, some little graphics and kind of what their plan is moving forward. And then if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions and their team as well. So with that, Candace, did you want to do a quick little presentation?
Just for the record, we'll open up the public hearing, so you may start.
Thank you, Chairman Saylor and Commissioners. May I take my mask down?
Oh, absolutely.
So. Okay, great. All right. Well, good evening, all of you. My name is Candace Lungnecker. I'll get a little bit closer. I'm here, excited to be here from Granite Construction Company. I've got a couple of my fellow Granite folks with me, and then on the line, we have our hydrology consultant Wayne Chang and our SEQA land use consultant Jordan Main. And even if any questions come up. So Shaun did an excellent job of giving you kind of the full scope of the project. And so I just want to start off with a big thank you to Shaun and the City of Kalinga staff for all of their efforts in processing this application. This might be the better here. Okay, great. Great. So as Shaun explained, Granite's got an existing and active mining operation just west of Highway 19833, up north of the city of Kalinga. We've enjoyed being a part of the Kalinga community for over 40 years. And a lot of our employees live in Kalinga, and we're hoping to be a part of this community for many years to come. So what you're seeing here, I just, it's, it's kind of a nice picture. This is our active mining operation. You can see the belt line that goes center through here that conveys all the sand and gravel from the pit up to our processing plants. So of course, as Shaun explains, the project before you is an expansion of the existing operation. And the expansion is over approximately 368 acres. Of those 368 acres, Granite's proposing mining on 338 acres, and that would occur in six phases over the course of approximately 55 years. So also Shaun explained it's, it's a unique project in that it overlaps both the county and city jurisdictions. So very early on, when we started this project, we identified that we need three approvals. There was a use permit from the county of Fresno, a use permit from the city of Kalinga, and approval on our reclamation plan from the county of Fresno. So I just wanted to highlight that because it is a little unusual. Fresno County is, has a mining program, and they took lead agency jurisdiction for the rec plan. So when they approved the use permit, they also gave us an approval on the reclamation plan over the entire project area. And so the, the request before you today is for that final piece, which is the use permit from the city of Kalinga. Great. This project has a couple of benefits in the way that it was proposed. So we have, since it's an expansion of an existing established operation, it's, it's nice in the way that it's not as impactful as a brand-new mining operation. We're very fortunate to have that circumstance here. The project is a designated as a mineral source location in the Fresno County general plan, but also it has the, a resource extraction overlay in the city of Kalinga general plan. The traffic associated with sales, as Shaun mentioned, from the mined area will use the existing direct access off Highway 19833. And everything about how we mine, the intensity of the mining, the equipment that we use, all of that will stay the same. So we went, we did go through an extensive environmental review. You can blame me for the very lengthy report. That was in the staff report. And and it looked at all of the impacts that are required under Sequo. It did reveal that all those impacts could be mitigated to less than significant level. And Granite accepted a conditional use permit and mitigation measures from the County of Fresno. And then we're we also agreed to the proposed conditions of approval and resolution that's being proposed by the the city. That is all I have. I wanted to keep it brief. I'm definitely here if you have any questions and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
You.
Okay, Vice Chair Jacobs, do you have any questions?
Just some curiosity about the water that's out there. It sounds like you're going to get down to about a hundred feet to where the the water level is.
The the mine is proposed down to two hundred feet and then the groundwater out there, I think, was that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it was at three hundred feet and you guys are going to be about within a hundred feet of it. Is that safe? Or is that what's a normal operation for staying above the water table?
I've seen operations both ways, both into the groundwater table and above it, but it is safe to be above. It's just that just happens to be where the marketable sand and gravel reserves end. So it it was a benefit that that did not go all the way into groundwater and we then didn't have to analyze what mining into the groundwater would look like. Yeah.
Is that water any good out there?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? The other thought was, you know, there's all this talk of valley fever and the dust or whatever. Did you guys analyze? I mean, and what level does it go away? Do you have any data on that?
You do. So I'll just talk a little bit about that. There's an air quality portion of Sequo where we have to look at at those impacts. And so what we did, there's typically with air quality, there's thresholds that you see whether you meet. And there's there's no threshold for valley fever. But we did look at it because of course, in this area, it's something that we have to consider. And and there were two things that we identified for controls that were pretty common in businesses that are in the area. And the first was dust control. The Air District has what they call Regulation Eight. It gets into a lot of detail about where we have to apply dust control on unpaved hall roads, on our conveyor belts and everything to keep the dust down. That was the first. And then the second, I believe, is out of OSHA. And that really is about training our employees to identify what valley fever looks like. I think one of the most dangerous things is that it doesn't, it's difficult to identify in yourself. So going through training, I believe there was a Senate bill that was passed that requires some pretty extensive training. So what we stated in our project is that we would do both of those things.
Is there a higher incidence of valley fever with the employees there than than normal? Because you're working in it all day long.
Yes, it's a good question. It's not that I'm aware of.
You know, I took a tour of that place, I think, four years ago. I was very impressed with it. I just wanted, I know that's a unique material out there. And I think we're all fortunate that it is here in our location. So well done.
It's one of the neatest mining pits I've ever had the fortune of seeing. So I liked it.
Commissioner Helmer.
Couple of questions. I noticed that the hours of work are from six to five.
Yes.
But that's the mining work, right? Because that's a twenty four hour operation out there.
That's right. So that's just for the activities in the project area, which is just the mining.
Okay. So what else is going on in the middle of the night?
So in the project area, the only thing that we'll have outside those hours are maintenance, emergency projects, and I believe there is some provision for public works projects. It's very typical that we mine during the day and processing operations can happen at all times, depending on what the need is. But this will be just for mining operations in the project area. The processing plants exist north of the project area.
Okay, so I noticed in terms of the the noise study that was done, which is fascinating. Whoever did that was did an amazing job. But so the the berms that are going to be constructed when the Colinga part of the project gets closer to the Elks Lodge or to Cambridge, berms will be put up.
Yes.
Any idea when that's going to happen?
Yeah, there's actually, if you have your packets and you go towards the back of it, I'm going to show you guys, it's the easiest place to see it. Page PDF page three eighty three of the staff report. So it's at the very back. Has our mining and reclamation plan sheets. So if you want to pull it up, I'll give you a minute there. But it's a visual of where those berms will be constructed.
I saw that.
Yeah. And so those will happen within the first couple of years of each new phase that we enter. It's the overlying overburn that we use to construct the berms. So the idea is that we go in and then we strip all the overlying materials. We use that to build the berms. And those berms have to be in place by the time we get within those distances of the two areas that you mentioned.
And you're expecting that to be within a few years of the beginning of the project?
Of the mining within each phase.
Okay.
Yeah.
So last August is when you got the approval from the county.
Yes.
And at what point then did you start operations on the county approved process or portion?
We haven't started on the county approved portion. So we anticipate that could be some time. We have existing reserves. We're reminding now. So it's the the way when we're working through this with the county is we said we we wouldn't be able to start or be require us to start within a couple of years. It will just depend on what the market is and how many reserves we have left in our existing area. So you'll see that the way that those conditions were written is that it's fifty five years from the year that we start. Just to give us that flexibility.
So the noise that that's there at night has been there all along?
Yes, that it for the processing operations, I think, is probably what you're talking about. And yes, that's been there.
Now, do you anticipate starting on the county approved portion or the the city approved portion first? Or is it just depending on some other operational need?
Nope, that's a good question. I'm actually going to go back just to make sure. I don't get this wrong. Is it displaying on your end? So the it's not displaying. That's okay. In that same part of the staff report, if you're down at those project sheets, the first the or the second sheet in that whole set is the phasing plan and it shows the phases. That is the order that will go in for mining. So phase one is, I believe that is both the county and city. It overlaps both the county and city property. Will likely start at the very northern part of that, which is within the county, but we'll be in the within the city jurisdiction very shortly. That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Garza.
By looking at your map, I notice we have a creek that runs in between that. Are you ever going to divert it back into the pit to lift the water table up in the valley? Or would that ever be possible? Because the water just runs and it's gone.
Sure.
You know, so once you get done with one pit, could it be diverted to 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 the pit or is it even allowed?
It's a really good question. So the way that we designed the project was to avoid the creek and the floodplain altogether, except for the elevated conveyor that will go over that one crossing section. But the way that we'll leave this property at the end, the restoration, we're we're required to leave it in a way that it can be adapted for other uses. So that's exactly the kind of use that could be looked at once the site is fully mined is for pit capture. I think is maybe
I've seen that.
What you're talking about.
Creeks and the for the mining done. And if they fill it up with water, you can go fishing here for a hundred years from now, maybe. But we won't be around. It figured you can't fill it back up and leave it back the way it was when you guys get done. This is the issue. The other question is, the city, does the city benefit any taxes from this? From Granite or anything? Does anybody know? Or or just the county?
The place of sales with I know I'm looking back at Sean, but the place of sale was is within the county. It's right at that entrance road off of Highway thirty three one ninety eight. So for sales taxes, I believe that goes to Fresno County.
Well, it goes to Fresno County. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Pruitt.
So Commissioner Garza's question about where the tax money goes was one of my questions. So your business license is through the county then?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I the other commissioners did a good job of asking about the next question, but just to clarify in my mind. This is just an expansion for you to maintain pretty much your daily rate of production for the next fifty five years. So it's not like you're ramping it up, which would increase the risk of valley fever. I work for the school district and, you know, we've got the schools right there on Cambridge Avenue, and that's definitely a concern. So it's it wouldn't be increasing anything.
Not. That's right. That's right. We frame this up specifically so that it would just be continuation of the existing operation and not additional tons per year. We took a look at, we call it baseline, but we took a look at a twelve year span. When we first started to analyze the project, which captures kind of a nice ebb and flow of what the market looks like. And we took the average ton sold per year and said, okay, that's what we're basing this off of. And we're not going to go over that average tons per year.
Okay. And do your employees get health benefits?
Our employees do get health benefits. I know that some of them are in the union. And yep, I'm getting the nod from our materials manager who I know knows a lot of information about that.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I have one more question. Just curiosity, since you dug a big hole. Have any, have you guys ever unearthed any fossils?
No, not in my career. We haven't. No.
Fossils, no dinosaurs or anything else, bones or?
No.
Just curious, because there's so there's so much around here that they have unearthed, but since you're digging the pit, I figured there might be some there.
I know. We do have some conditions in here that say if we do, there's there's a process to follow because you never know. So.
That's all. Thank you.
Of course.
In your existing operation, I know that there's endangered species and things that you spoke to very, you know, well in here. But have you had any experience, you know, coming across dens for burrowing owls or the kit foxes or the the lizards or anything?
I haven't at this site. I've seen it in the valley at other sites, but I haven't come across. I think it was, yeah, like you were saying, kit fox and blunt nose leopard lizard were some of the key ones. I have never seen them out here. Thank you.
Does Granite own land on, it would be the west side of Monterey Avenue?
Yes, yes. So that's the, there's a parcel. There's actually a the top third of that parcel, picturing it in my mind, is permitted under our existing mining operation that's to the north of this area.
So you will tap into those resources before moving here? Is that what that's that's the plan?
I think it will depend on how accessible those resources are. Sometimes there's so much overburdened that it's it's very costly. And I know in that particular location, access is a question about how we'll access it. So that's the idea, but I also know that it's possible that those reserves will be difficult to access and we may leave them as is.
Okay.
Who do you sell mostly to? Is this mostly road base? Or what is the use of the material that comes out of there?
Yeah, the sand and gravel that comes out of there. I know that we do sell construction aggregates is a big part of our business. And we have an asphalt plant onsite that we serve from our own mine pit. So we'll serve our own asphalt aggregates as well.
Any any other need for discussion? Do you have anything else? Like to comment to any of your consultants need to say anything or?
I really just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move right along. We will close the public hearing. There's no need for further discussion. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a couple of things that I wanted to make note of that I discussed with the applicant on a couple of conditions to revise a couple of conditions. And so when the when you guys make the motion, we'll do, you can make them with the revised conditions if you agree to it. There is some kind of, and some of it's just in the basically the administrative side in terms of the first condition, condition approval one, it talks about the voiding approval. And we kind of use the standard language, but the applicant had requested that we use a little more detailed operation just because this is a fifty five year conditional use permit that we remove the the first sentence and basically just state the development and operation for the use shall be in conformance with the site plan, operational statement and reclamation plan approved by the commission. And then below is the approved estimated phasing mining operation. The conditional use permit shall not exceed fifty five years unless extended by the planning commission. So those are kind of some of the new nuances that we wanted to put in that language. So it goes for fifty five years. However, if the applicant does come back at a later date, it needs to extend that. It just need to be extended by the commission. And then also below the phasing plan where it talks about this conditional use permit shall only remain valid so long as the applicant maintains in good standing. That was some cannabis standard language that that we need to, we need to remove from there. And then there's there's just two other conditions, condition eight and condition nine. We just want, we were going to remove those. We typically have a requirement for setback and screening off highways, but they're their operation's not off the highway because you have those buffers of commercial parcels. So there's no need for those fifteen gallon trees. And then that just kind of eliminates condition nine, which has to talk about, which talks about the water efficient landscaping because there is no landscaping requirement for this project. So we've eliminated, but we've just asked to eliminate condition eight and nine. And I think those were the only ones that we made changes to. So everything kind of moves down. And then I will provide the chairman with an updated resolution for signature or conditions for the executable resolution. Also, the resolution, I think in the staff report, surprisingly, it did say can resolution twenty one oh oh seven, the attached resolution is oh oh six. So just for the record, you will be approving oh oh seven. And I've already made that change on the document. So again, when the chairman executes the approved resolution, it'll be oh oh seven for the record.
Okay. So if there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. And make a motion. To approve?
To approve.
With the with the conditions set forth?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Garza made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Helmer made the second roll call, please.
Commissioner Garza?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacob?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you again. Discussion and or potential action items.
We have none, Chairman.
Perfect. Staff announcements.
I have none. Just wanted to, I'll just update the commission because we had a lengthy discussion at the last council meeting regarding the drought situation. And so the city council moved to initiate stage two of the water conservation ordinance, which is two days a week watering for residences and then commercial. So it's basically, I think it's Wednesday, Saturday and Tuesday, Friday, but don't quote me on that. And so and then we're further, we're going to be furthering, you know, kind of going deeper into conservation in July, which have the potential to go to one day a week watering. The water situation is dire. We're going to be reaching out to commercial and industrial partners to We're gonna be reaching out to commercial and industrial partners to help reduce water, conserve water by about 30%. And then residences are expected to start reducing their water usage both inside and outside. The one day a week thing is what may be the approach in terms of water conservation. However, when we develop, we're gonna update our current ordinance with an urgency ordinance that'll be going to the council in July. But we don't know for sure if it'll be like a one day a week. We're trying to find a reasonable way to save water. And one day a week is pretty difficult on probably everyone's landscaping. We want to address, you know, it really comes down to lawns are the most water-intensive user of the water. We want to be able to address drip irrigation and allow more drip irrigation to sustain our bushes and our trees, to ensure that those don't die. And we're working with the college and the school, actually met with both of them today. And they are going to work on reducing their water usage. We've requested between 25 and 30% reduction of their water usage. And then I'll be meeting with the Parks District and then also we are in constant communication with the state hospital and the prison, which are in a pretty difficult situation because of the fact that they significantly reduced their water consumption during 1415 when we had the drought. And so their reduction capabilities are very difficult. I think the state hospital may be looking at possible expansion of additional patients, which doesn't really relate, doesn't really result in reduction of water usage. However, but those are state entities. And we have a letter that Dan Bergman, our consultant and myself, are preparing to send to the bureau requesting our water supply for the remainder of the year, which will include a number beyond public health and safety because a public health and safety number at 55 gallons per person per day is not enough for the city to survive. I mean, I've been having conversations with people that have swamp coolers that say, hey, our swamp cooler can almost use 100 gallons a day. So it's like an additional two people in your household if you have a swamp cooler. So we are working with all of our partners, the large water customers, because and the fact that June, July and August are critical months to save as a community. And this community stepped it up and they saved a ton during 1415. And we're not back to 10, 11, 12 numbers. We're just over, you know, the numbers from 14 and 15. This community's continued to save and conserve water even through the good years and bad years since then in the last six years. So we just need to continue to persevere through conservation efforts these next few months. And we're gonna do our best as staff to push the bureau to give us as much water as they can. One of the unique situations is that when in 14, 2014 and 15, which was the big drought, where it's much worse than 1415. The last two years were the two driest back-to-back years, second to back-to-back years in 100 years. So water that came out of the sky, snow that came out of the sky, never made it to the reservoirs. It basically either evaporated or it percolated back into the ground. So it's one of those things where the water just did not come and hasn't come in a few years. And so, and what I was kind of getting back to is what's unique is that when we had the drought in 1415, the governor basically said, hey, we need to conserve 25%. We're gonna find you if you don't. There's gonna be penalties. You gotta do it. Well, we had plenty of water from the bureau. The bureau had plenty of water for us. So, but we had to curtail water here and yet we were still selling to Harris Ranch wholesale water because we had excess water. And so that helped soften the blow in terms of, if you recall, you know, when we had their increased rates because of the drought, people were using less but then had to pay more for the water. That was help offsetting that increase that we have because we were able to sell that excess water. But the state wouldn't let us, let the residents consume it. But this year, in this go-around, the federal government's telling us they don't have water. And so it's very different when your contractor doesn't have the water to provide you and they're buying water on the open market. So it's a much different situation this go-around because our contractor doesn't have the water to provide to us. We're hoping that we'll get some relief later in the fall when they have to start releasing water out of the delta. But right now, nothing's moving.
Our pipes in our city have to have a certain amount of water running through them or they just stagnate?
Yes. So our goal and my goal is to continue communication to the public. We will not be doing routine flushing, but we will be doing health and safety flushing. So when we do our spot checks and our testing on our water, on our water system, if we need to flush, we'll flush. We're gonna look at trying to notify residents. We're gonna start putting together a list of folks and Granite may be one of them that have water tenders that may want to line up when we flush hydrants and take the water for other uses to ensure that it gets used somewhere and not just go down into the storm drains. We're looking at working with the fire department to, because one of the, one of the areas that we have a lot of problems with residual on the water quality is post-the-schene. We'll just hook up to the fire department engine and we'll water the park with it if we need to. So there's ways to try to reuse that water, at least in some fashion, rather than just having it go down the drain. But it's part of maintaining water quality too and it's part of the education to the community as to why we're doing flushing if we do. I've already talked to my guys about making sure that I'm notified in advance of flushing so we can make sure we can get a notification out. Larry's probably gonna provide, get some information out on Facebook about the program that we have that allows us to do mass messaging out to folks. It can be geo-coded, which would be, or geo-fenced, which would be in a certain vicinity. We can send it to everybody in the city. It's kind of like those amber alerts that you get or the other alerts that you get on your phones. We have the capability of doing that in case of, if we need to notify people. And we feel like this is an important time to utilize that, so we're gonna, Larry's gonna put some information together that's gonna give people kind of a direction on how to sign up for those services. So they, you guys can all be informed and the community can be informed when we have these different things going on like the flushings, understanding that the school district and the Parks District and the college aren't gonna be watering on the same days as all of us. They just can't do it. So the goal with us and contacting them and working with them is about them, about savings. It's, I mean, if they could water every day, but if they save 30%, they save 30%. So we'll be working, I'm working with them and they're gonna be providing me their kind of proposed scheduling. But since 1415, they have these nice sophisticated watering systems now that contract percentages of all the water they're using. So they can really hone in on savings as they're asked by the city. So it's still kind of a work in progress. This is gonna be a month of communication to the public and encouraging education and just trying to work on conservation as much as possible, working with our businesses, working with the state hospital and working with our large water users. And we also have some meetings with the, with the oil companies as well to ensure that, and try to avoid these larger, you know, increased projects during this time that we need the water. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but we'll, we'll have some more information going to the council in July. We had to cancel the contract for the splash pad, which kind of makes sense. But that will probably be resurrected next year. Hopefully we have a good water year and we can come back. We're gonna redesign it with a reclaim system so we can reclaim as much water as possible with that. But that's kind of where we're at right now in some of the actions that the council's taken recently.
Commissioner announcements.
I have a question. A couple of meetings ago, we were talking about emails for the, city emails for the commissioners.
That's a good question. I'll see, I think they talked to the IT guy. I'm not gonna call Larry out right now because I can't remember if I asked him to see if he could get our IT guys to issue emails, but I'll make sure I get those taken care of. They may have been lost in translation.
Thank you.
You heard something?
Yeah, Sean, too, we use more of these laptops in here. I do need to get the passwords to the internet system.
Oh, yeah, I can get that for you.
The Novus thing, I still don't have the login credentials for that.
For Novus?
I had, I, to log into my account, I was able to at first and now I'm not able to, so I don't know what's wrong. Probably operator error, but.
That's okay. I can send them to you guys.
Perfect. Anything else? Alrighty then, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.